Okay, I got six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Solzby?
Here.
Counselor Savage? Sorry, here, thank you. Counselor Flack?
Here.
Counselor Stenner? Counselor Urban?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Gally?
Here.
Alright, so we are here tonight to talk about the homelessness discussion. We have packet materials all listed on there. Mr. Myers?
And our city attorney is on her way, so she'll be here shortly. We were working on some of the stuff that we presented on the dais, and then she had to leave to get here, so she should be here shortly. For those that are online, we have additional items down on the packets on the agenda page, so if you go down to the bottom of the agenda page on the packet information, there's actually some sample ordinances or some amendments that we'll be talking about later as well. So just to get started, I wanted to kind of go over some of the goals or some of the thoughts we had from the previous meeting where we talked about homelessness. And they're kind of set up so that we can accomplish them in steps, and talk about how far we want to go with those as we get through the evening. Some of the actions that we identify will be moved to accomplish these goals. So number one, from the discussions at the previous meeting, we want to do whatever we need to do to comply with case law and the statutes. I mean, that's probably the bare minimum goal that we have, is to accomplish and comply with statutes and case law. The second goal that was discussed was while complying with case and statutory laws provide opportunities to break down the barriers that prevent members of our community from escaping from the cycles of homelessness. So if we can break down some of the barriers and help them escape, that was a goal. The third goal was to open up housing opportunities that will stabilize and assist members of the community to develop skills needed to move to more permanent solutions to homelessness. We didn't want to just shelter people. We wanted to do things to help them improve and get out of that cycle, and then to seek ways to develop permanent supportive housing opportunities. So once we get them into some kind of system, we need somewhere for them to go, or they're going to remain homeless. So solving homelessness is not just building shelters and putting people in camps. We've got to move them into housing somewhere, and getting them into some supportive, permanent supportive housing, or low-income or affordable housing is one of those goals that we want to try to accomplish. So what we're going to talk about tonight, and I'll go through some of the background information, what I want to talk about tonight is how we can get there. What are some of those options that we can do? What we're kind of doing now, what's happening in the community now, and where and how we can move from there. We're not going to take any comments tonight, and I wanted this to be for the council to discuss and come up and think about some of the items, have some discussion. There are so many paths, rabbit holes, twigs, branches, tributaries, or whatever, that we can deviate down as we talk about homelessness, and some of the solutions, and some of the criterias, and some of the issues, and all of that, that we want to try to get it into some kind of focused discussion, and then start taking comments, so that we're not constantly being distracted by going off into far reaches of things as we try to look at some of the issues. We talked a little bit last time about Martin versus Boise. Carrie's here now. She wasn't very...
I wasn't like that. I was too bad.
But so if you have any questions on Martin versus Boise, basically, Martin versus Boise, and this is the Extreme Reader's Digest condensed version of the case, is that they set law that an ordinance violates the Eighth Amendment insofar as it imposes criminal sanctions against homeless individuals for sleeping outdoors on public property when no alternative shelter is available to them. That's in a nutshell. If you had to write that down on a little piece of paper and stick it on your forehead, that's the piece to stick on your forehead about Martin versus Boise. That as long as we have an ordinance that says it's illegal to camp in a city park when there's no other shelter available, that's a violation of the Eighth Amendment. And so if we have places available, then we can say you can't be in parks. And as we talk about some of the things tonight, that's one thing to remember, that even if we do everything, and we build shelters, and we provide all this housing, if those get full, it still rolls back to Martin versus Boise, that if there's no place for them to go, they can camp on public property. So regardless of what we do, we can always still get back to that. We want to try to build it into a way that that doesn't happen, and/or we can control that a little bit, but it may still happen, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Legislature in '21 passed two house bills, House Bill 3115, which essentially codifies into the statutes Martin versus Boise. It also puts into the statutes, did you find it? The clause, oh, okay.
I think it's...
In statute 3115, House Bill 3115, what's the actual chapter now? That is, ORS, what?
195.
195. And so what it basically says is, if you have ordinances that are in place, you could be sued, even if you're not enforcing. So you've got to clean up your ordinances as well as comply with Martin versus Boise. So that's one of the things we'll talk about a little bit tonight as well. House Bill 3124, we really won't talk about too much tonight. That's the one that creates, if you create a campground that's been there for more than 72 hours, then you have to give notice if you're closing it. Just for your background information, that one's there. So what I've done is, what I want to do is kind of break down how we're going to discuss a little bit of what's going on, and some of the opportunities that we may have. State statute has now also, which one is it that has, where they defined transitional housing? That cities can now create a transitional housing opportunities and put those into their community. And I've taken transitional housing, and for our purposes in Cottage Grove, kind of broken it into two pieces. Transitional housing can be anything inside an urban growth boundary, from vehicle camping to tents to structures built, that is, non-permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness. I've broken that down into emergency immediate sheltering with low barriers or no barriers, and then with a second piece of it, kind of two subsets, one being transitional, that may have a few barriers, but it's also got more responsibilities and developmental opportunities. And that's the one I call transitional housing, because we're hoping that they'll transition out of that into permanent supportive housing, or low-income or affordable housing. The shelters or the immediate emergency facilities, low barrier, kind of following the first housing-first model, to get them in and get them stabilized. A great example, sad example, that we had just a few weeks ago, when we had a gentleman pass away in our campground at the community center. Unstable housing, concentrating on trying to find himself a place to stay, did not take care of his medical conditions, and as a result of that, passed away because he wasn't paying attention to his diabetes and other health issues, and hadn't for years. So housing-first model gets them stabilized in housing into some low-barrier thing, so that they can start working on, concentrating on those things that they need to address: medical conditions, mental conditions, jobs, ID, all those barriers that keep them locked into a homeless situation. Our current situation in Cottage Grove, as you're aware, we have our shelter at Community Sharing, I mean, at the community center. The community center campsite is kind of low barrier, and we have no barriers there. It's, if you come in, you follow these rules, you can be here. We do have a barrier of only eight spaces. It's working, they're full, and it's, the revision that we did of it just a few weeks ago seems to have really helped a lot. Our guests there appreciate the improvements that have been made. Their biggest appreciation goes to the fact that when they leave, they can lock it up. They can close their facility, their tent off, and feel safe in knowing that when they come back, that those possessions are still there, that they won't be messed with. And we've had a number of them go to the warming shelter as a result of that. There's no heat there at the community center for them, and we wanted them to go to the warming shelter. Now they have been going, we believe, a number of them. Not all of them, but most of them have been doing that. We also have a few at City Hall, City Hall here now, and they've been staying, and I think they've been going occasionally to the warming shelter, but for the most part, I think they're staying there because they're pretty sheltered in a little warmer situation next to the building. We also have the warming shelters that have been operated by Community Sharing. Basically, they are transitional housing, low entry, low barrier to get in, but they're only operated on those nights when they hit the temperature threshold. You have in your packet some information on the numbers that have been going on there. We have some new numbers for number 20, which has been February 2nd, and then we have numbers for February 3rd as well. Both of those were 14 people there attending, individuals attending. There have been, if you look at the list, there have been some nights when it was full. And we have 17 buildings with the potential of those holding two, but we only put two in there if it's a family or a couple or a relation of some sort. And so there may be some nights where we have 17, but we still may have had a couple empty because they were too bunked together. That's an interesting number. Last year, I don't think we had more than nine in nine nights that were used. This number does not represent, and you'll notice at the beginning of the year, we had seven in December, and 15 and seven, and then it's been up above that rest of the time. This does not represent a number of people coming to the community. Most of these people, or all of these people, I believe, except one night, I think you had somebody that you weren't aware of, but all of these are people that are in the community, that have acquired services in some way in the community in the past, either through Community Sharing, or South Lane Wheels, or some other entities that report. They've had services in Cottage Grove, so these are people that are from the area. We don't have people coming from, turn this off, before it goes off.
And Richard, I'll just chime in real quick. We did have one night where we turned three people away because we were actually over, exceeded capacity at that point.
Yeah. So that's good to know. We do have, currently, we have an order with Lane County for 15 more pallet shelters, the small ones. So those, we don't know when those will be coming, but I'm not sure when Lane County's going to actually submit the order to pallet shelter to have them made and shipped. So we're looking at that. With those 15, that'd give us 32 beds total, but, well, no, single beds, but we'd have, those could be doubled up as well. So I think that gets pretty close to what our pit count now is, our point-in-time count in the past years, somewhere in the 30s and 40s. So we'd be real close to being able to hit our capacity of what is hidden in the community. We also have what's called rolling homeless, those that are in vehicles that are throughout the community. We don't see them a lot, because we have already adopted, I didn't think to change that, adopted a change in not enforcing our code that says you can't sleep in a vehicle, you can't lodge in your car or in a vehicle on the street. We're letting them sleep in their vehicles on the street. They do have to follow the parking regulations in that they can't put it somewhere where they can't park, and they can't park for more than 72 hours, more than three days. Counselor Urban?
Yeah, I'm wondering about this. I'm reading some of the provisions here in the proposed draft ordinance, and can it count as city providing alternative housing locations by opening up camping in private individuals' backyards? Is there a way that that in and of itself can meet the standard of providing additional or alternative housing?
To answer your question, I think it does in a way. We can't count those, because typically, they're going to be occupied, but we can't, what it does do is it keeps those people from coming in and using the city facilities and using up the space there. So it adds that space back into the system. So if we have 30 spaces in our shelter, and there's 35 homeless individuals out there in the community, and we have six people doing it in our homes, we have a gap or a free board in our space of about six, so that we're not getting up against that line where we can't enforce the prohibitions of camping in the parks.
Yeah, I'm thinking of an independent of a city-run, operated, funded housing initiative. Maybe there's a way we can do, like, I don't know if there's a written contract or something that you, basically, that the city can have volunteer private homeowners say, "I want to become that location," then there's no expense to the city. I'm just wondering if there's a situation like that that meets the standard that Boise sets in terms of, I mean, because the minutia of that is, if they feel uncomfortable for whatever reason, it's not a viable thing. If it's not open at a certain time, it's not a viable thing. So we want to address those. We don't want to put something up and then just think that we've solved the problem and then have it thrown out in court and everything. So I'm just wondering if, this seems appealing, because it allows people, once again, to operate on their own generosity with their own volunteer initiative. I'm just wondering if you'd explored that concept apart from the housing, transitional housing?
Yeah, and I consider, well, and actually, technically, under the state's definition of transitional housing, those that would be under that sample ordinance, that would be in private property or in homes or in their driveways, would count and would be transitional housing. But I think if one of those was vacant, and we had somebody, could we say, "Yeah, that one's vacant," but typically, it's something that would then be a contract or an agreement between the property owner and the individual, and we wouldn't be able to say, "Yeah, that's vacant, you need to go over there," and force them into somebody else's driveway or property, because the property owner still has a right to say, "No, I don't want that person on my property."
If I may, same thing Counselor Urban was asking, just a little different way, is would, if we had a nonprofit running one of these, or a church or something, would that suffice the Martin versus Boise?
Yes. If we're using one of the other agencies doing it in a little bigger, and we'll get more into that ordinance...
So it doesn't necessarily mean the city has to do it.
Exactly.
If we had somebody else doing it, we would be golden, but we don't, so it falls back on the city then, is that correct? Am I asking more to this to the attorney then?
I think if you have, you know, a nonprofit organization, a church or a business says, "Hey, we're going to open up four camp sites in our parking lot," and they only have two on a night, and we find two people in the park, we can take them there, and that's a part of the larger, the ordinance has two types of transitional housing opportunities there, and I guess I'll describe it a little bit. One is for those larger groups and larger organizations, and then we opened it up for individuals, if they wanted to do it on their own piece of property, with no more than two, or a church only wanted to do one or two, they could do it, and then they have a little more control over who it's going to be and things like that. But the larger first portion of that ordinance is for those groups that do have more than two, and they'd be open to whoever comes in, and a little more low barrier, and those would be counted. And if we had 10 of those open around the city, and we needed them, that's where they'd go instead of in the park. Yeah. So that would satisfy Martin versus Boise. I don't think the individual small ones would necessarily satisfy Martin versus Boise, because we'd give them a right to refuse who they rent to, or not rent, but make it favorable to them. Does that answer your question, both of you? Oh, Counselor Solzby?
Thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. I would like some more clarification from our meeting when we first discussed this, and I was questioning Martin versus Boise, and I would like to get your opinion, your professional opinion on this, because an article that I found, let me clarify this, it's, if we are as a city going to do something like this because we are being told that we have to, and it will be put on the expense of our tax-paying citizens, I think we definitely need some clarification as to what is being told to us, is that we have no choice. So this article says that Martin versus Boise does nothing more than acknowledge that the Eighth Amendment prohibits cruel and unusual punishment, and hold that criminalizing, arresting, and jailing a person who lacks access to adequate temporary shelter for the mere act of sitting, lying, or sleeping in public is cruel and unusual. It says, "Martin versus Boise Court explicitly stated..." ...will now be recorded. "...our holding is a narrow one. We hold only that so long as there is a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction, that the number of available beds and shelters cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntary sitting, lying, sleeping in public. Additionally, the Martin Court added that naturally, our holding does not cover individuals who do have access to adequate temporary shelter," and, which is what you were saying. And then it says, "To argue that local governments are powerless to do anything about homeless encampments unless there is an adequate shelter space or public housing available for all people living unhoused in a jurisdiction, multiple courts have held that Martin does not preclude a local government from clearing encampments so long as no arrests are made. As the court explained, that it limits locality's ability to arrest their homeless residents for the act of living in the streets when there is nowhere else for them to go. It does not create a right for homeless residents to occupy indefinitely any public space of their choosing." And so, and then the city of Oakland has fought it, city of Berkeley, and so, and Los Angeles. And so I'm wanting to know exactly what the real nitty-gritty of this is, because this definitely sounds a little different from what I'm hearing.
Whoa. Okay, so the nutshell of what Boise imposes is that you can do nothing and let people be in your parks and public spaces. If you're going to do something, and you're going to try to enforce time limits, no sleeping violations, it's part of your code, so if you're enforcing that, you're actually subjecting them to penalties, right? You're writing a citation. Nobody just shews people out of the park. The officers are asking compliance, and they're citing individuals for failure to comply with your code, your offenses. So right there, you're imposing them to a cruel and unusual punishment by enforcing your code, which prohibits sleeping in parks. So that's that Boise prong. So if you're going to enforce it, then you need to have reasonable alternatives, locations for them to go. So you don't have to enforce it, but if you're going to enforce it, we need to have some reasonable alternatives. And the court in Boise said, actually, the plaintiffs in that case were shown Boise was counting multiple beds in religious institutions, you know, a place like the mission in Eugene, where individuals going there needed to do prayer before meals. That was offensive to this plaintiff in Martin. And so that was not reasonable. So suddenly, you start crossing out a lot of alternatives that you might think, that I might think, officers might think are reasonable alternatives, if it's a location, but it doesn't take dogs, it doesn't accept children, doesn't it, you know, has some sort of religious overtones. Suddenly, those could be unreasonable for different individuals, and you have to do an individualized determination each time that you're wanting to cite, and that puts officers in a really tough position. So that's, I think, I mean, I'm sorry, I can't summarize it better, and...
Yeah. And one of the challenges or problems with that article is, we cannot clear a camp if we don't have a reason to clear a camp. If we don't have some kind of statute to clear a camp, there's no reason that they have to leave. So you have to have some law or rule behind it to clear a camp out. And so I think some of the argument in the article may be missing some pieces. If they're saying, "Yeah, you can clear camps, that's not a violation, as long as you don't cite them, you know, cite them for a crime, or cite them and give them a citation," well, then you have no right to clear them, if they're not breaking any law. So it's, that's the issue that creates the challenge. We can do nothing, and we can't do nothing. We do have to fix our ordinances under House Bill 3115, but if we do nothing, then they can be wherever they want to be. We can create some areas and say, "You can't be in these sites." For example, we say, "Okay, you can only be in East Street and the Rowl River Nature Park." Well, if we have a flood like in 1996, most of that park was underwater, the homeless couldn't be there, that place is full, they can move anywhere else. So even if you have a restriction that says, "Yeah, you can't be in this park, this park, or this park," if the other ones are full, or there's some reason they cannot be there, they can come into those places where you actually have laws saying they can't.
And again, that's cruel and unusual punishment.
Yeah, Counselor Solzby? Go ahead.
Oh, this is not going to be a solution. I mean, none of this is going to be a solution. We've seen this in Eugene, we've seen this in Portland, we've seen this in Seattle, and they have missions, and they have places to put them up. And so I'm, hold on, I'm sorry. So, you know, that's my reservation, is we just keep everywhere, is just pushing it further and further and further, and it's not creating a solution. And so I'm very reluctant to go down this road, honestly, because, you know, to me, there's part of me that says, "We're 20 minutes from Eugene, that has homeless shelters, they have the missions, they have a lot available up there." And so I'm thinking, could South Lane Wheels facilitate some of this? Could we pay for it that way, so it's not such a burden on our citizens? So these are just my brainstorming thoughts, just knowing that, you know, and also too, I struggle a little bit with the city putting these enclosures in to protect people's stuff so that they can leave and make, I just, I feel like we're going to grow this. This is going to become bigger. And so, and I am concerned about all the neighbors over there, and I hear, what I see on, sent to me through Facebook, is some of these neighbors that are afraid now to take a vacation and leave their home unattended, and, you know, that's, these are citizens, and these are real fears that they have, and, you know, and so I just feel like we need to represent them, too. It's not just the homeless, it's what it creates all the way around. How do we truly know? Richard, if you don't mind, explain to me how you know for sure that these are residents of Cottage Grove, and if they are actually from here, and, you know, because I've seen a pretty big influx, and a lot of people that I don't recognize at all. So if you could explain to me on that issue?
Yeah, and most of them, well, all of them are ones that our police department has interacted with in the past and has found in other locations, so they are people that have been around. The mayor talked about Hope in his State of the City address. She's been in the community for eight years homeless, and hiding someplace, and being places where most of them don't want people to know they're homeless, because it's embarrassing, and so they hide it, and they hide it well. And when they get the opportunities to break those barriers and get out of it, like Hope did, she came to the community center, we started getting into the mobile shower, she started helping, she got cleaned up, she got a job, and now she's working. But guess what? She's still homeless, there's no place for her to go. And we need to fill those holes, so that when they start, we've got a guy working at the community center, who's, he's working on a regular job, and he's gotten a job while he's there, because we got his ID for him and helped him get stuff going, but he can't go anywhere, because there's no place to live. He's on a list for another year and a half, until there's a place.
And that is, that is different, too. That is very different. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is I don't want to be like a Eugene. What I'm talking about is I don't want to be like a Eugene.
Right. And that's what, if we can go on with the discussion, that's what I want to show, we're not going to create camps. We want to create something where it is housing, and then there is counseling and interviewing and other things that fill in those services to get those barriers broken down, so that they can get their IDs, they can get cleaned up, they can get going back to work. And then we need to get, we need to get some other housing for them so they can move out of being homeless. One of the gentlemen that's there at the community center now, he just moved in because where he was living, his RV where he was living burned down. He was taking care of a brother or a family member. The family member got so severe that had to go into a nursing home. He was living on the property in his RV, it burned down, he's homeless, and so, he's there in, at the shelter. And those are the ones we're trying to help and get back into the system, get back out of those barriers that are keeping them. I mean, it's tremendous what's happening with housing. Counsel, reflect.
So, the first one I want to address is whatever we do is not going to be the solution. There is not going to be any one answer that meets the needs of all sorts of different type of people that are experiencing homelessness. And so, as an example, our solution will not help the two people that I trespassed in this last week from the shelter for bad behavior. You know, these folks were in a psychotic break, there was not any way that my staff was able to care for them with our level of training, and so, these people needed to be in some sort of, you know, psychiatric hospital situation. That doesn't necessarily mean has to be forever, but there does need to be those options. And the state, in my opinion, has completely abandoned us in this one area. But some people are going to need other levels of, others may just need that hand up like Richard's talking about to get IDs and get jobs and get back into some stable housing. Then, of course, that also goes into our muckety and actually finding enough housing. Another thing I do want to mention, there is not enough shelter or housing in Eugene. In fact, we are now part of a group, we do front door assessments, which will put people into a list, you know, of all the unhoused folks in Lake County, to get them into shelters and rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. There are a fraction of the beds necessary for all the folks in Lake County. So, shipping folks to Eugene is not going to be the answer, because there are also not the spaces up there for folks. So, like I said, this is a very tough discussion, and I get, I mean, I don't want to become Eugene or Portland or Seattle either, but I think we have to look at what are some, you know, reasonable first steps that we can do to mitigate the problem. And that's the key piece here, I want everybody to know. You know, I've had somebody, I think it was at our last meeting, commented about Utah, you know, saying that they've ended homeless, yet you still see people. Well, that is going to happen, you know, you're going to have transitions of people out and then back. I mean, this is, it is not something that's going to be solved. It's something that's going to be an ongoing work and progress, and it's something that I don't think we have a choice. I think we really have to address, and I think let's do it in the way that makes sense for our community, that's not going to break our budget. I think we need to partner with the county for funding and the CCOs and the hospitals and the other folks that are impacted in this. And I think when we all come together, I think we can come up with some solutions, not the solution, but some solutions that will address, you know, the bulk of our concerns.
And through some of the samples and stuff and the ordinances, you'll also note that we have, we have provisions that there will be people that are going to be excluded from these places. We've excluded some people, two of them at least, and three now, from our facility at the community center. When they break the rules, they violate a law, they're out of there. And we exclude them, and what's sad is our attorney tells us that, yeah, they're excluded from the community center, but they can turn around and go camp in Corner Park and create problems there. And so, then we have to exclude them from that. We can't exclude them from the city. You know, the medieval days of banishing them from the kingdom, we can't do anymore, because we have an Eighth Amendment now. So, it's a long process, and two of the people that we actually excluded were ones that should be in some kind of regional or state facility where the state has failed us and dumped people into the communities that are those extreme cases of mental or challenges and problems, that they should not be on the street and alone. That is the cruelest thing, but it's cruel to them, it's cruel to everyone, because they shouldn't be there, and there's no way that we can address them. We've also sent some people to Eugene or other places when we find out that they've got a family member that is interested in helping. And we've gotten bus fares and sent them off to those. There's, last year, there was a young man here in Cottage Grove, a year before last, before COVID, who was a student, a youth, and he was living in Eugene through the Looking Glass Program, and then he'd come to Cottage Grove for school, because he, this was his hometown, but we did not have anything for youth to be able to house here. And so, every day, he was getting driven to Eugene and back down to Cottage Grove in the morning. And that's tough, that's hard to do, and he was really committed to be going to school here. I believe he graduated and everything here. But what a, what a trip to have to go up and down every day and the resources that that took. So, those are options, but those, we can't, we can't pass everything off to Eugene, and it doesn't work.
I just wanted to speak a little bit, I'm hearing concerns and policy discussion really circles around costs, taxpayer costs and impacts. So, the, you are in that unenviable position of having to weigh between the costs of the doing nothing, in which case you're cleaning up parks, you're cleaning up corners and sidewalks, and having citizens scared to use your, their public places. So, that is a huge public cost monetarily and impact wise, as opposed to affirmative actions of trying to find places and setting costs and resources on having those alternatives, reasonable alternatives. So, I just didn't want the costs associated with the doing offensive or.
And we have kind of had our staff look at how much time they've spent cleaning up the parks and cleaning up camps for abandoned sites around the community, and we spend about $737 a week cleaning up facilities in the community. Now, this isn't the big stuff that's on top of this, so cleaning out under the bridge or cleaning out a zombie house or doing those other things like that are on top of this $737. In police functions and police activities, it's about, over the last year, from February to February, in '21 to '22, which we were shut down part of the time, COVID stuff and everything there, it was about $2,600 for that, which with Martin versus Boise, some of that's not, you just can't use the police and the law to, the jail and stuff to enforce or take care of some of that. But that's what we were spending there. So, there are costs. The gentleman who passed away on our, at the community center, he would go to the hospital, to the emergency room, of course, probably once a month, if not more, and with issues and problems that just were not getting addressed. And that's a cost to the healthcare system as well that won't go away, some of these cleanup costs won't go away as well, but they'll be reduced and mitigated as you look at some of the other systems and things that we can put in place.
Mr. Myers, Counsel Irvin has his hand up, then Counsel Salisbury.
Thank you. So, just quick math, we're talking about just about $11,500 a year currently being spent on cleanup. Is that, is that accurate? That's about $2,700 and then $737 a week?
That's a week, $737 a week is about $38,000, yeah, 39.
52 weeks in a year?
Yeah. Usually.
Yeah, there's, okay, plus 27, great. Okay, so, under $40,000, the first proposals that I recall were going to be somewhere around $60,000 administrative costs for transitional housing placed, not to mention the capital outlay and building maintenance and everything, just administrative staffing cost is, do we have any, was it the Office of Budgetary, Finance, whatever, when a bill is put forward at the federal level, there's like an assessment. Do we have something like that for these draft ordinances, what you're proposing?
The draft ordinances, there wouldn't be any impact. I mean, it's, those are just creating the laws for making it available to do, so that doesn't create that. Now, if we do have, and we have a proposal from Carry It Forward to run a dawn-to-dawn 24-hour facility for up to 40 people at $170,000 a year. So, we would build it, they would run it and operate it, provide the counseling, the interviewing, the processing and the wraparound services to get those people out of the homeless situation and up into more permanent housing. Up to 40, they're certified up to 40.
Counsel Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Richard, what you're saying is that we would build it and they would man it and, but would the city be paying for them to man it?
Yes. And we would be pulling from the county, we'd be pulling from PCEL, and probably like the COC, the CCOs, tell them what that means.
Coordinated Care Organization, it's, yeah, there's now two, there's Trillium and Pacific Source, and so, we could go to them. They've been helping fund the cahoots and other models in the Eugene Springfield area.
There's a survey out from Lake County right now that I would suggest everyone go on and complete. They've got $15 million left over in their ARP money, and they need to figure out what to do with it. And a really good suggestion to fill into the blanks is direct rural assistance for homelessness and mental health stuff would be an ideal space. They have a huge chunk of money already going to homelessness, but that would be another piece that would be really beneficial because of the amount that they do contribute to Eugene Springfield in addition to the county amount that goes there.
Is that America Russian Plan?
Yeah.
So, and then my, the second part of my question was, you talked about how much the cleanup costs and that, yes, camping is not breaking the law, but wouldn't leaving garbage and debris and a mess for the citizens to have to pay for, to take care of, wouldn't that be against the law?
Yeah, if you can see them doing it.
Well, the police all know who they are, I mean, it's.
You gotta see them do it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you could be in the park, somebody can litter beside you, and it's not you, but they get.
And with that being said, I do realize that there are a lot of people that are down on their luck, and there's families that are out of work, and there's, we have a lot of teenagers that are couch surfing. I'm not talking about that particular group of people. What I'm talking about are, what concerns me is us putting together a place like we're talking about and having the same people come there night after night and fill it up so that other people that, you know, that people that are, that this may be a lifestyle for, and you know that there are those, and so, that the others who really could use the help and the handout cannot use it anyway. And so, I would want to see some definite move-on regulations and something in place where it's not taken advantage of, the citizens of Cottage Grove are not taken advantage of, and, you know, that's really important, that we establish that. And if this grows the problem where we built this now and our parks are still getting full, I would want to see something like maybe this be a trial or, you know, something to that effect, because if it creates more of a problem, I want to, I think we should have the opportunity to back up.
Counsel Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Salisbury, I hear your concerns very much on what you're saying. And once again, I keep bringing this up for the last three and a half years, is the program that I went through 32 years ago, where I was housed, fed, given a place, the whole thing, but I had a list of stuff that I had, I was evaluated from day one, and I had to hit my checklist every week in order to continue on to get through this. I watched the program I went through change lives like you would not believe. So, you know, I'd love to see us get into a program similar like the one I went through. I don't know if any of you here have had a chance to go down to the Highway 99 site and walk around out there with what the city's done with the fence and everything. I personally think that that is a great site to put such a program in there, run by a nonprofit, where people can come in there and we can actually help them, as Richard's saying, change their lives for the better, because that's what I'd like to see through all this, you know? I'd like to see something that is bold and different, something different than what other communities are doing. I think we can lead the way here in the great state of Oregon and help and change lives, because in some of these communities, like you brought up, Counsel Salisbury, it's not working. It's not working in Portland, it's not working in Eugene, and I don't want to see that here. I want to give people a chance to actually change their lives like my life has changed. I mean, I think about the program I went through all the time and how lucky I was to be in that program. You know, they helped me with teaching me how to get job interview, they helped me with clothing, they helped me with how to do job interviews, fill out resumes. There were classes there and the Small Business Association Administration was there, there were, we have all the services, or mental health, if there was someone I needed to talk to for that, there were the drug classes, if we needed that. It was all there for those people to sign up and to be able to do, get them all under one roof. That's what I'd like to see.
And right now, we've had some success with the community center and the site there with people improving their lives, getting jobs, breaking some of those barriers, but we're doing it on an eight-to-five basis with no supervision at night, no supervision on the weekends. I mean, that is a challenge. Those are things we just cannot provide those wraparound services for. And if you've read the Carry It Forward information that I presented in the packet, too, that's in the packet, that's what they do. They have those wraparound services, and that's one of the reasons why the Highway 99 site is so attractive for them, is there's rooms where they can do the counseling and the interviewing and the classes and the trainings and work with people to get them out of that. Is it going to work for everyone? No, it's not. There are going to be those people who, it's just, they're not ready, they've got other, too many other problems, or they are people who need to fall into something more structured and restricted and severe that have just been dumped on communities, but, you know, this is an attempt to try to reduce that number and mitigate those and get those that need to be out of the system, out and into what we call normal life, and, you know, get them into regular housing and get them, get them working and doing something where they have that dignity and stuff back. And I think if you read the Carry It Forward information, it's exactly what you're talking about, Counsel Salisbury, and what Counsel Roberts is talking about, is getting them into those systems and those programs to solve the problems and get them out of the tents and out of the shelters. That's the goal. But you've got to get them in it first. If they're out wherever, we can't reach them. We can't reach them if they're in the parks, we can't reach them if they're under the bridges, because we have no, we have no controls or access to them.
Counsel Irvin.
Thank you. I'm wondering where in our code specifically we're in violation of House Bill 3115.
Well, if you.
Is it what's lacking, or is it what's written?
It's what's written, and so, if you look at the, in the packet, there's, I think it's called Title IX or Chapter, I, Chapter 10, I mean, in our roadway use, well, that's not the one, it's the 12, Title 12, Chapter 12, Parks and Playgrounds, City Parks and Playgrounds in the packet. When you go to, what is it? and Playgrounds in the packet, when you go to, what is it, 020, 12, 24, 020, about four or five pages, four pages in, subsection I says it shall be unlawful for any person to camp out or sleep in any park area at any, at such time when the park is closed except by specific person, permission of the city manager or designate, so that is flat out a violation of Boise, in the Martin versus Boise, K kind of repeats it again, it shall be unlawful for a person to enter or remain in any park or part thereof from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, you'll see, we did some amending, some proposed amendments to this that would make it comply, but we also put some controls in there, and we got rid of I completely, but in K, and this is where we're, we're looking at trying to control a little bit, put some of those reasonable time, place and manner features in, but in order to do that, we still need to do something that we have, something, someplace available, and so we said in community, neighborhood and mini parks or any riparian or wetland areas, they're prohibited to be in from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, so basically we've taken our community parks, our neighborhood parks and our mini parks, that includes Pointer, Bohemia, Trailhead, West End, Fort Harrison, Benny Hubble, Woodson, those, those developed parks and said you can't be in those after 10:00 and before 5:00 AM, also the riparian zone or the wetlands, so that takes along the river, there's, we've got some safety reasons, we live on rivers that vary when the Corps decides to change the water flow, and if they're in one of those points where they could be swept away, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen, wetland areas, those are sensitive and protected under state law, and so we're kind of saying, hey, those are for other purposes and, and are not a place to be dwelling and living in, but it does leave open, and this is one of the things we thought through seriously, we didn't want to list in here the parks that you can camp in, but there are parks that don't fit these definitions, that they, there is some available space, and, but if those places are full or can't be used because of some weather condition or some issue associated with those parks, that means this whole ordinance could go away and they could still come back into those community or neighborhood parks if they couldn't use those other facilities.
So I get striking subsection I, not following from what I, from my familiarity with the case, why specifying, why you couldn't say it's unlawful to remain in the time, the time matter and place in, in the major parks, what's the distinguishing factor and how's that relate to Boise, is it specifically safety concerns, or, because you say community, neighborhood or mini parks, I, I would argue that all parks are in our community.
We have, those are definitions that are in our Waters to Woods report, so those are specific parks that are identified as a community park or a neighborhood park or a mini park, so North Regional Park, Rao River Nature Park, those are, they, those aren't in this category, and I think there's a couple others that aren't in the category as well, so those are things that, they don't include all the parks, those, those names.
But, so that's, I mean, that's my question, I see the attorney's hand up, but, of what, what part of the Boise decision is saying that you can't put a time restriction on the park?
Right, so, we're, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping in, but we are addressing Boise, we're also addressing House Bill 3115, and it specifically says that you're allowed to enact or enforce, I guess, a time, place and manner restriction, but it has to be objectively reasonable with regards to persons experiencing homelessness, so we, we really can't take everything off the table, and what your, what staff at least is proposing right now is this policy balancing of which parks do we really want to try to protect as much as we can and which are those that we want to leave open in the event that our alternative accommodations are unavailable, so you're setting up sort of a tiered approach of, here's where we really want people, locations with warm shelter services, if those are somehow not available, they're full or they're otherwise unacceptable to unhoused individuals, well, we do have some public lands that we aren't restricting with this 10 to 5 restriction, and then we have our neighborhood parks, mini parks, et cetera, those are kind of the areas of last resort that we are calling out as protected by this time, reasonable time, place and manner, manner restriction, and it seems to me that we can say that's objectively.
You need a mask to be in here.
Pardon?
So, I mean, the objectively reasonable is the big.
Not just objectively reasonable, but as to people experiencing homelessness, and so.
Do we have any definition of that or any case law that we can, that, that is.
The brand-new law goes into effect, you're, you're getting out ahead of it, it will be in effect in 2023, so you need to be in compliance with it in a year and a half.
So it stands to reason that we're just trying to, this proposal is, is just trying to play it safe, it very well could, you could, you'd have to make a case, you'd have to be challenged and then make the case that it is objectively, objectively reasonable as it relates to homelessness, is that, so it's gray area, we don't know?
Correct, but the penalties are pretty high for getting it wrong, and they're imposing attorney fees on municipalities that don't guess right, and we have no guidelines, so that makes it, that, that makes it, you're incentivized to, to be conservative.
Counsel Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think I just want to reiterate what Counsel Irvin was saying and ask the question, what is objective, objectively reasonable if a camp is allowed to be in a certain space at a certain time, but they have to do an hour's worth of chores, is that reasonable? To me, that seems reasonable, but to somebody who wants to fight that, that may not be reasonable, so who, who defines what's reasonable, and that may be exactly what Counsel Irvin just asked.
Right, the courts are ultimately going to be that arbiter, and until we have case law interpreting this language, we just, we try to give it as much force as possible, and that's why, so if a location that is requiring an hour of chores a week, maybe that's unreasonable to certain individuals and so you want them to have somewhere else to go, in which case they have some other parks, some other public spaces are still, will still be available.
Say you have somebody who has a physical disability that can't perform tasks that you're preventing them, that would not be an option, it would be unreasonable.
And, and again, it isn't ever going to be a rough blanket rule, we won't know what this means with regard to the general population, because you have to make it every single time if one individual has issues, you need to determine, is, is our law, is our 10 to 5 restriction in these types of parks, is that objectively reasonable with regard to this homeless, homeless individual?
So I have a point of order, ma'am, that does no good to put it on your chin, please recover your mouth and nose, thank you.
So, where are we?
Counsel Salisbury? Then Counselor Stenit?
All right, so, question for the city attorney, if they refuse to leave even though we have space for them, they still cannot be removed from a park, and is that correct?
No, not necessarily, if, if the officer running through his objectively reasonable analysis determines there's many places that would be acceptable, including this individual's own home, say they have a home, you know, Boise specifically called out, they have a place to go, including their own home, you can cite them.
Okay, so I, this is my personal opinion here, is let's just kind of call it what it is, we're, we're not really doing this because of Martin versus Boise, because we can't fight this, if they want to camp in our parks, they're going to camp in our parks, so if we want to help people, that's what this is about, is to get people on their feet, but let's just not say it's to keep them from camping, because they still really can if they want to, and then the other thing, if you're talking about the, the stiff penalties to the city for not, for non-compliance, the only way that we would have penalties, correct me if I'm wrong here, is if there was an arrest and that person sued, correct?
Yes, they would, yes, they wouldn't have a claim, well, actually, that, I'm sorry, no, I'm wrong, they, they can now, so even, so a plaintiff can sue a city if you have a law on your books, the plaintiff's not seeking to vindicate an interest unique to the plaintiff, so they're just saying you have a unlawful restriction of, on, on public places, sleeping in public places, they've given you notice that your law breaks 3115, under those circumstances, they, they file suit, they will be awarded reasonable attorney fees, if the court determines that your law is not objectively reasonable of the time, place and manner restriction, so you'll have some notice in advance, you could always take it off the books if we can act that quickly, but the fact that you have a law on your books, even if you're not enforcing it, still could subject you to sue, either 3115, and an award of, of attorney's fees, and I'm just, since I have the floor, since I have the microphone, I do want to say, I, I believe that part of what's motivating this discussion is the desire to do right, but I really believe that a lot of it is to do, is to be able to enforce whatever ultimately is on your books in your city parks, to protect those public places or the general population.
But we, but we can't really enforce it.
When you, hopefully what we're doing is crafting a, a scheme, like I said, a tiered scheme that will allow you to enforce what is on your books, and we want to create something that is enforceable.
Thank you, Counsel Stenit.
Counsel Stenit?
Love to get in the queue. So I had, um, two things, maybe first a question, and I, I don't even know if I'm asking anyone in particular, but I keep hearing from several folks tonight and elsewhere, people saying, well, we don't want to be like Eugene, we don't want to be like Portland, we don't want to be like Seattle, each time I hear it, I kind of wonder what that means, is that a failure of policy in those, in those cities that, that people are seeing, or maybe are there more people there experiencing this issue and they've had to deal with it sooner and more often and use more resources and spend more time on it, I, it, it sounds like we don't want to make the mistakes they made, but I never hear what that is, and I guess I'm just kind of curious what that is, the other thing is maybe an opinion, I, I would also agree with people that say that we're not going to solve the myriad issues that lead to homelessness among the various people that experience it in Cottage Grove, those issues are as complicated as the people themselves and the lives they've led and the circumstances they find themselves in, but again, I, I keep trying to distill this down to something that we can handle as a city of Cottage Grove, as a, as a public government entity, if you want to get real simple, how do you solve homelessness, well, with homes, right, the, the lack of a home is solved by a home, and I, I don't think you need to go deep into what a home means, because it means something different to everyone, but I think we're talking about the reasonable shelter that allows people to, to live a human life, I think the first and biggest thing we need to do as a public entity is to, it, it sounds like in these circumstances is to provide that reasonable shelter for people when they have no other option, that's, that's as simple as I can hear it and as simple as it's been presented, we have, I, I'm very concerned for the homeless in Cottage Grove, but also concerned for the neighbors behind the community center, that sounds like something that no one would, A, no one signed up for and no one should have to deal with, is that the best use of the land behind the community center, of course not, but we also have a pretty good spot of public land that already has shelter on it, and if we have deemed that shelter to be adequate for people on the most inhospitable nights in our calendar year, then why can't we, A, put a few more there to, to help reach our capacity of, of the, the nightly, I forget what Richard called it, the, the study that says this is how many people we should reasonably be able to expect, if we're going to pay for something, it could be staffing for that, including a robust coordination of volunteers and recruitment of volunteers, and then we go out into the community and say, who wants to help with this problem, because if I know anything about Cottage Grove is that it does want to help, there are people that want to help, there are organizations that want to help, there are churches and nonprofits that want to help, you could, they may not have to help all the time, they can provide the bare, the minimum in, in, in terms of our statute, the, the draft ordinance that I'm seeing says that, you know, there have to be sanitary facilities, et cetera, prepare these organizations to do that, provide the capacity for, for shelter for people that need it, and, and then we go from there, that it just sounds that simple to me, and, and if I'm wrong, then I am happy to be educated on it, thank you.
And I like to get with the root cause analysis of why they're, why they're homeless, and tomorrow night I got a, a meeting with 15 nights, and that's a program for youth that if they, if they're on the street for 15 nights, if you can get them within that, you'll save them, if you can't, it's really tough to do that, I wondered after listening to that, what that is for an adult, you know, if they're on the streets for 20 nights, are they harder to bring out of it, and so somebody I'm sure has done a study somewhere on that, but, you know, we, my, my work really preaches on root cause analysis for safety incidents, and this is the same thing, is you got to go back and find out why they are and figure out what you can do to, to fix that.
That's, that's one of the functions of Carry It Forward and why they've had such success in, in the work they're doing is those interviews and those counseling sessions and, and what we've been doing at the community center, I mean, when we figure out why somebody is in the position they're in and start working with them and getting hope, for example, she needed some mental counseling, she needed some counseling services to address some of the issues she'd been facing over the eight years, Teresa was able to get her into a counselor and bingo, it started snapping and working and she started going to the community shower, the mobile shower and working, then it made a difference, that's, and each one's different, each person is going to be different, and that's one of the successes of Carry It Forward, and you look at their staff and the resources that they have of people who are experienced in, they've experienced homelessness, they have pulled themselves from that, they can, they can address some of those issues, so what I wanted to talk about tonight is we want to get rid of the community center facility, I mean, we need to get rid of that, Teresa isn't doing anything else other than taking care of that, Teresa and Jessica, that's all they're doing pretty much all the time, we aren't set up to do that work, that's not our wheelhouse, Teresa's been doing a great job, Jessica's been doing a great job there, the library staff has stepped up and really started filling in as well, they've done some extra training, because libraries are a great place for homeless to go to during the daytime, they, they love to go there and sit, read or just sit and, and charge homes or whatever, and so it's important for them to do that, and they've taken a really big initiative in trying to get trained and know how to handle and what they can do to help people find resources, but that's not our primary purpose, I mean, we still need to serve the rest of the community, we need to make sure the community center is there and available, we want to eliminate that site, but we do not want to release those people and just say, hey, we're not going to help you anymore, go find someplace else and you won't have any kind of supervision, you won't have any kind of counseling or help or support to keep you there, and that's vital, and that's what I think Carry It Forward does, or if we have the shelter facilities like Counselor Stenit is saying, what, we have some options, I mean, we can, and we have the Highway 99 property that is a great piece of property, with a house already on it, with facilities there that could be used by the staff and getting those wraparound services there, it's got some time to get done, I mean, we have some work to do out there, some of the ground's a little wet, we need to work on some drainage ditch that's there, that's plugged on one end, there's some things that need to be taken care of there before we can, we can use that site, do we want to eliminate the community center site quickly and move the shelter to the warming shelter and eliminate the warming shelter, just turn it into a dawn-to-dawn facility, we could work with Carry It Forward, they could do that, they said, yeah, we could do that for a while until we can move to the 99 site, that's a resource, that's an opportunity, it's built, it's done, it's ready to go, when we get the other 15 units, we could put those in at the new site, then move people there and move the remaining units in as well, or we could put. Or we could put units in there. So those are some of our options. We also have the piece of property that we just purchased on Douglas. And one of the things I see, that site, it is in a residential area. It has some residences nearby. It has the train tracks and the city shop also nearby, so it's kind of on the fringe of a residential area. But I see that not being a good spot for having that immediate no barrier facility or shelter. I see that being something more similar to the tiny homes where it's a 15-unit transitional housing where there's more barriers there. You have to show that you've done some stuff, that you've been taken care of, that you've got your ID, you're doing some, you're working maybe even, or maybe on social security. And you can't work, but you're on social security and you have some income. Those would be the people that are going to be doing some self-government and have some things that they'll be doing on the project, on the property. There's great gardens there. There's a wonderful grape arbor there. There's some great fruit trees there. They just haven't been trimmed for several years. But there's some opportunities there to create, opportunity for people to get a life again until they can get into some other low-income housing. One of the things we've been doing as well is we've been working with Homes for Good, trying to find them a piece of property that they can come into the community. Homes for Good is Lane County's housing authority, for those that don't know who they are. They're the ones that have been running the Riverview Terrace since 1965 or 68, when that was built. They won't go anywhere. If they build a low-income housing development, they will own it and forever. It sounds funny to say that, but we were just with another property owner talking about that, and their staff said, yeah, we'll own it forever. And, you know, as long as we're here and they plan on being around, they will continue to own it. It's not one of those low-income housing developments that gets built, and then five years later, they sell it to somebody else, and you never know how it's going to be operated. We've been working with them, trying to find properties. One, we've met with a property owner. We're looking at some others to see if we can get them to build the low-income and some supportive permanent housing, which fills that every little step that we need to help work on homelessness. I mean, homelessness is not going to be building shelters. That's not going to solve it or mitigate it. We need to be looking at that long-range picture of doing something for affordable housing and low-income housing, and even permanent supportive housing. We need more of those in the community to try to get that taken care of.
Counselor Savage first, then Counselor Flick.
Thank you so much. I had a couple thoughts running through my head as you were talking, Mr. Myers. Is there a way, and maybe this would be through community sharing, is there a way to talk with folks in our community right now, saying, if these services were offered, would you use them? Or maybe word it differently, what do you want going forward? You know, I think, and I've used this analogy before, I think of my husband, the chef. He can walk into a kitchen and he goes, a chef did not design this kitchen. So here we are with homes, trying to help folks who don't have homes, but let's talk to the people who really need them. I'd be really interested in knowing what they want for themselves, and you have your hands right in that pot. So maybe that's as simple as doing a survey that gives examples, you know, would you be interested in counseling? Would you utilize this? Would you like to have that? Would you like to have two meals a day? Would you like to have pallet shelters? What are their ideas that we could then glean from and help them with that? Because that's ultimately what's going to be really successful, is helping folks get what they want. You can't, there's that saying, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a drink, right? So if these folks are saying, this is what we want, let's help them do that. That's what's going to be most successful. And then you mentioned the Douglas Street property and how we've applied for another 15 pallets. Is that something where you're thinking that the other 15 pallets could potentially go there? Would that be more of like a stick-built?
Those would be more of a stick-built structure facility, a little larger than probably the pallet shelters, a little more homey feeling with a community center building that would be the kitchen and restrooms and stuff. Square One Villages runs things like that. Opportunity Village in Eugene is just like that. So we've been in touch and talked to those people who are running those, and they're very interested in providing those services to the community. And to answer your first question, Square, Carry It Forward does that. I mean, I don't think the city wants to get into the business of deciding what counseling to do, who needs counseling, what they want to do. Let's let them, they're the experts. They're the ones that have experienced homelessness. And let's just hire, let's put the infrastructure in. We'll consult with them. How do you want it laid out? How do you want to set up? We'll put the, we're good at infrastructure. We're good at building things and putting things together. Let them do that piece of the people interaction.
But we don't want to put in the wrong infrastructure.
Right, and that's why we work with them.
My point is it'd be really great to see what folks actually want.
Definitely, and that's what we'd be doing, and they'd be involved in it from the ground up. That's because we don't have a ground. We've got, that's all we've got is ground. So we'll be moving from there up to what they see they need and how it fits, yeah.
And one more comment, I kind of, when Counselor Roberts was talking about the program that he went through, I'm seeing that as more of that second step. You have now graduated from a pallet shelter, and you are now transitioning into real world. Here's some extras, but you have to keep working. I worked at the state hospital in Salem, and there were different units for different securities. You know, if you're in a really high lockdown unit, you have zero privileges. You can come out and you could eat a meal. Sometimes you don't even get to come out and eat the meal. But you have to meet certain mile markers, and then after so many weeks of meeting those markers, you get a little bit less security, and you get a little bit less security. So if I may reference and say, take away that word "security," and you're talking about less boundaries, you know, we kind of release it, there's less conditions, you know, and it's,
More responsibilities get built on, yeah.
It's building their self-esteem back. That's what my program did. It made me realize I could do whatever I wanted to again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's important. When you feel you can do things, you can do it. I agree with you on that.
Yeah, thank you.
And so my next question is, where are we budget-wise, as far as, are we getting more COVID money? Where are we, but say if we did activate 99, moved this year, did this year, where are we financially with that? I mean, what part of the budget is that going to come on?
This is an eligible, all of the stuff we're talking about tonight is an eligible expense under the ARP. So we can use that one-time money that's coming to us from the federal government specifically to help and address homeless situations, as well as addressing home affordability and low-income housing. So it goes that whole spectrum as well.
So we could help the Douglas thing. It could help, it could do the whole enchilada, the step-by-step of it all.
Yeah.
And there you go.
And how we can maintain it.
Yeah, and we've estimated, and I'll throw it out there just so that everybody can drop their chins on the table or whatever, but we've estimated and put into our estimate that, hey, $500,000. Let's get this into a place where it's funded, and we're ready to do the capital and move forward. And it's money from the ARP. We'll never get it again, and it'll be an investment in the community. Now, is that the right number? I don't know. But that's kind of what we're looking at. And it still leaves us funding to do water and sewer stuff. It still leaves us funding to do things. We're getting $2 million. So trying to do that to address this piece and then, you know, still be able to do some broadband work, all of those pieces in there that we could address and take care of this piece too.
Counselor Flick had his hand up a while back.
Oh, boy, and I'm trying to remember all the points now that I want to talk about. So I totally support, you know, doing something. I think that the Douglas site actually is better for your lower barrier because it's closer in town. I think you're more likely to see folks, you know, utilize that service. I was talking with the Carry It Forward folks who also agree with that assessment.
The challenge it has is there's no fixed, there's no facility, no house on it or anything. And that's a huge expense that we're just trying to avoid some of those extra expenses.
And I think either would work. I just, I think location-wise is a little better.
Yeah, it is a great location. It is a perfect location for that. Exactly.
And going back to Counselor Savage earlier was talking about not being able to restrict folks. Absolutely, we can. And in fact, Richard, I would name the parks. Because I'm thinking that from the police department's standpoint, and maybe, you know, Chief Shepherd wants to comment. But it seems to me that if we end up full, and what are the options that we have available? And just so folks know, you know, the point-in-time count is done in the last Wednesday of January because that's where your typical population is going to be of your year-round residents. But you have what they were calling travelers for some time, or the folks that actually come through and being on I-5. Our numbers do go up, you know, from folks traveling through in the summer. There are quite awful be folks I've never seen before, you know, out by the fast food places. And so I just, you know, for clarification, we do need to kind of know, you know, what we're dealing with here. But I think for the police department standpoint, if we have, you know, even both of those sites are full, then we say that there is this area that we've determined is going to be the least, you know, impact on the other residents around that park. And I do think we spell out where it is. And so when we go back to the, you know, just having an area versus a case-managed area like we're talking about with Carry It Forward, I think, and Counselor Stenit mentioned, why do we not want to see Portland or Eugene? Is some of those camps that are unmanaged end up with hazardous waste and feces? And, you know, the problem is when there's no oversight, unfortunately, it becomes, you know, quite a disaster, which is where some of these huge dollars in cleanup come in, and really makes sense for us, not only for the enhancement of the lives of the folks we're serving, but also for the betterment of our community. So I certainly support doing that, but I do think, like I said, so that the police know, you know, where, you know, folks, you know, they're talking to somebody who's maybe in a spot they shouldn't be. As an example, Eugene had people camping on the parking strip in front of residence homes. I absolutely do not ever want to see that in our town, and I think that we need to be proactive and say, you know, this step, then if that's full, this step, and make it very clear what our options are so that we don't end up in that scenario. I think that's fair, but both the, you know, the residents who are unhoused and housed in our community.
And that brings you to the third ordinance that's in the packet. Well, actually, it's probably the second ordinance that's at the bottom of the packet, and that one's on the street right-of-way. We proposed an amendment there, and this is one of those that we think is reasonable under time, place, and manner as well because camping and being in the parking strip or in the bike lane or on the street is unsafe. Those are for vehicular traffic and other things, and we put it in with our use of roadway. We just put it right into that same section, basically saying, a person may camp in a vehicle on city right-of-way. This is in a vehicle on city right-of-way if the vehicle is parked in accordance with all established parking regulations. So that means they're not parked in front of a nonparking, no parking sign, or in front of a hydrant, or they haven't been there for 72 hours. You know, once they hit 72 hours, that's in violation. They'll be tagged and can be told to move and tow. A vehicle is not parked within 100 feet of a public or private school or public playground. The vehicle is not being repaired in the right-of-way because, and these are all things that we also, except for the park in front of a school or anything, the vehicle is operational and can legally be operated on the street and no material items, supplies, or waste are on the street sidewalk, bike lane, or planting strip. These are things that we also enforce on any vehicle. So that's another thing that makes it reasonable is, hey, we're also citing people who have their great big huge 45-foot fifth-wheel toy hauler parked in front of their neighbor's house for four weeks. We go out and tag it. They get a big orange sticker on their window. They can't get off until they move it. They're not to store things on the city streets and treat everybody the same. Then item B is no camping in a tent, structure, or shelter, or other non-vehicle is allowed in the right-of-way, including bike lanes, sidewalks, and planting strips. And so we're identifying them as right-of-ways. These are vehicular locations where people should not be blocked from using those. And we think that's pretty reasonable based on those facts, and that we don't have to set a time limit or anything for those. So, yeah, exactly what you're saying. We want to put some of those controls in so that we're making sure we don't end up like the pictures you see in Los Angeles or Portland where they're filling the sidewalks along the downtown business area, and that's not acceptable.
Counselor Irvin.
Mr. Mayor, so I think a few things have just distilled down in my mind about this. One, I do think we need to change the code that's in violation of 3115, having it be well thought out so that we mitigate the risk of just lawsuit. It seems like is, it's just low-hanging fruit for anybody that wants to take that currently. So that should be addressed, I think, quickly. My issue here is the roles and responsibilities of a city, of municipality, and we're living in a context of a lot of change culturally, moral change, ethics. All, everything is up for debate right now, and I want to hold fast on proper motivations, proper incentives. My, I think my biggest issue with the city taking on this responsibility is that it improperly sets up the incentive structure for making change. There's an element that when an organization that's supported almost indirectly by people is providing the resource, at least in my experience, I noticed that entitlement grows, an attitude of entitlement from the recipients of the resource. It's hard to not have it because you're not faced with, that you're actually taking a resource from somebody else and that it's being given of their own free will. What we're talking about here is going to be sucking resources from a lot of people against their will. There will be a lot of people that it will be supportive of. And just that structure in itself, I think, is a recipe for long-term disaster. It might be short-term fixing, it might be addressing, it might have some real short-term benefits and benefit some, I can't even say what percentage of people. There's just too much unknown here. And, but it doesn't mean that the help shouldn't come. It should come from sources where there is accountability. And there's, you can, the sacrifice is, can be shown and understood, and that there can be judgment and reason and discernment exercised on the one giving it, giving the help. This, these proposals feel lack that, and therefore will perpetuate directly or indirectly an attitude of entitlement going forward, and we'll just codify it and make a way for it more and more. And I guess just, I want to move away from that. I want to move towards more responsibility. I want to move towards more accountability. I want to move in that other direction. So like, we got to mitigate risk. We got to change the code. But I just, I don't think this is the right move, the other proposals about the infrastructure and everything else. If it was other organizations doing it and setting it up, oh, and that was the other thing. Just because it's free money doesn't mean it's free. The source matters. It matters to me anyway. It matters to me. That's a character thing, just because like, that's all of our money. That's inflation wrapped up in there. This whole thing has consequences in how we spend this. So I'm not super excited about just a bunch of free money to spend it on things that aren't mission number one for a city, like infrastructure. I know there can be arguments made on this park stuff as well and protecting it, but I'll just kind of leave it at that for now.
Counselor Soulsby had her hand up earlier than Counselor Flick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is, how can we get community buy-in on this? I feel like six counselors and a mayor voting for the whole city to do something that the community may not support is what I'm struggling with. I am unsure if our community would fully support this, and I personally would love to see this go to a ballot. And I, even if we had to move forward with something temporary but not build it out, I would prefer a community buy-in on this.
Counselor Flick.
Oh, I wanted to address Counselor Irvin's comments about the, you know, we're Oh, I wanted to address councillor Irvin's comments about the, you know, uh, working, you know, with the unhoused folks. Uh, I, I've actually watched the Carry It Forward folks at our, our shower trailer. Um, and, you know, we, at the Warming Shelter and at our agency do a lot of conflict resolution, and, um, we learn to de-escalate, but these folks actually are working with folks trying to help them, um, you know, work towards, uh, reducing the barriers that are keeping them from being successful. And I've been so impressed with, um, the way that they are able to build rapport and, and work with these folks. You know, in the, in the hospital setting, you know, you have somebody who's, you know, they're, um, uh, they don't have a choice. You know, you have the motivation for their freedom to have, have them working towards goals. You do not, you know, in, in this situation. And so you have to provide, um, you know, the incentive for a better life for these folks. And by doing that, um, in a, in a meaningful way, uh, as I've seen the Carry It Forward folks do, I think you do make a huge difference. I do think they will still need, um, you know, addiction services, and they will still need mental health services. And they're, you know, these are, this is a much bigger conversation than we're having tonight. I think the conversation we're having tonight is actually just kind of the first steps. And I don't believe that our city should be the only role in any of these. I'd mentioned earlier that I certainly want to seek out other partners to help the financing of this. I, I certainly do not expect our city to be the sole, um, organization financing the ongoing, um, expenses. I do think that we do have this opportunity to put in, you know, capital, uh, infrastructure, and I do think that it, it would make sense for us to do that. Um, but, but like I said, the, you know, a comment was made earlier about the length of time. We've seen this in the, the HTBA program that we have, which is a program to get folks into housing, um, who've been homeless or in imminent risk of, of homelessness. And I, I will say, I have seen firsthand the impact on people, that the longer they are homeless, the more it impacts their mental health. Um, absolutely, I've seen it over and over again. Uh, people that I've seen for years and years and years that each year they get a little, um, harder to work with, and, and I think that the challenge getting some of these folks who've been unhoused for a long time is, is huge. And so I, I, as much as I hate to say there aren't any solutions that are going to happen tomorrow, I think that we have to make those steps because I think that they, that in the long run, uh, it doesn't improve, um, their lives and, uh, by default, because their lives are better, so is the rest of our communities. And, um, I think that we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't do something to help out all of our citizens in this, which is, which is where I'm coming from.
Councillor Stinnett?
I was just gonna, um, maybe respond to a couple of comments I'd heard. Councillor Salisbury, maybe first. Um, it seems like we're not making decisions or voting on a, on a, on a way forward here this evening, are we? I mean, we are, uh, having a conversation that is going to lead to public process on this. Um, I would hope for a robust, um, you know, spirited debate and discussion among the public on this. I think we can have that and we can encourage that. Um, councillor Irvin mentioned, uh, you know, the word entitlement, I think more than once, and I don't feel bad about people, um, feeling entitled to, uh, shelter at their lowest points. Um, this is a society we live in that's, seems to me to be built on rampant, uh, sort of disgusting inequality, frankly. Um, we're not going to solve that as a community, but I, it's hard for me to stomach the notion of a rich, very wealthy country that's just chock full of poor people. Um, so I think the basic, um, and councillor Irvin also addressed infrastructure, and I do think that's the conversation we're having. We're talking about, um, what must we provide? Um, what's the best use of city resources and, including land? And, um, I think that's what we're talking about is, um, we don't, you know, we don't, we didn't build parks to have them full of people camping. Um, we want those to be used for the reason that they're used now. Um, we have facilities that could house people when they need it most. Um, I think that's the first step. I, I don't, I'm certainly not against, um, you know, the, the outreach that could lead to, uh, to, to mitigating the larger problems that bring people to, to homelessness and to, um, to a lot of those issues, but I think we have to start here. And, uh, you know, that's kind of where I'm at.
Ms. Connolly?
Thanks. You know, I, I feel a little bad. I feel like, um, maybe when we were introducing the various ordinances, a lot of it was a little scattershot and we were jumping in and answering questions. And, um, Richard touched on a, a point, but I, I just wanted to make sure it's really clear. So the proposed chapter nine thirty, which is definitely a work in progress, is not the later program that you've been talking about, about where to locate city, uh, uh, city transitional housing. This is what councillor Irvin was initially noting, opens the door to allow private, um, individuals and entities to propose transitional housing accommodations and to allow overnight camping on private property as well as public property. So you would say, if you put this into place, the city could later than decide whether or not it wants to operate transitional housing, but also private entities, nonprofits, individual homeowners could also be considering such programs themselves. And I just wanted to let you know that responds to two statutes that have been on the books for a while, but were modified this year. One talks about transitional housing accommodations, that a local government may set up a program that allows transitional housing within its UTB. And the other is the, um, camping by individuals living in vehicles. And so I, if we can talk about it later, we can put it in council materials later, um, so that I don't just overwhelm you with a lot of numbers right now. But I just wanted you to understand, so the Parks Amendment addresses the Boise thirty-one fifteen, the transitional housing and overnight camping then hopefully provides some areas for overflow for individuals to keep them out of city parks pursuant to those two, those two state statutes. Doesn't set up a program for the city, just provides the opportunity for them. Um, and then there's the road ordinance. So I, I, I just feel bad that things were sort of thrown at you without a little bit of an overview or a roadmap of what each of them accomplish.
Councillor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It sounds like we're talking about potentially three different things. We're talking about folks who experience homelessness. We're talking about affordable housing, and then we're talking about the bridge that, that connects the two. Uh, from what I hear all over town is we need affordable housing. I realize we have apartments coming in, but a lot of them are going at market rate. What can we do, and maybe this is what we can do in the very now media, is what can we do to bring in affordable housing? Um, and, and that should also be part of this conversation because that component can really help folks who are really down on our luck, because the folks that we're talking about helping out probably are the folks that could work with affordable housing. You know, there's, there may not be a lot of mental illness, there may not be, um, other issues, they just need help getting on their feet. And that would be affordable housing. So that should also be part of this conversation and not just what are we going to do with folks who experience homelessness, but let's, let's look at that component very seriously as well.
Yeah, we do have, we do have some pieces of, of doing that. I mean, we do have our trust fund for the development fees and building permits for nonprofits specifically doing those affordable housing projects. It hasn't been used for two years now, this is the second year, so we've got a pretty good chunk of money there. And that's where we were working with Homes for Good and trying to get, we've got to convince a property owner to let us use a piece of property and get it into their hands so they can build a unit of, of reasonable size to house enough people and provide those, those units. So, um, yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, we've got the whole spectrum we're trying to work on and get that moving forward. So.
One of the things that we ran in with, um, if I'm going to put on a different hat as a developer, is folks who want to do affordable housing have to jump through a lot of hoops to get that funding, and that's a very lengthy process. And if you're looking to sell a piece of property, you generally want that funding immediately. Is there a way that we could help those folks, you know, bridge that contract and say, what if the city were to buy the property? You guys buy it from the city, but the, the folks selling the property can get the funding right away, the folks buying the property, it can take their time to fill out the paperwork, everybody wins, city gets paid back, but that begins the process. I don't know if that's something we can even do.
Yeah, and our development trust fund that we have is primarily set up for SDCs and building permits, so we can help there, which is a pretty sizable cost on some of those projects that could equal the cost of the land. Um, but that's one of the areas in talking with Homes for Good just recently, is, hey, let's look at a piece of property. If we need to come back to the council and amend the rules of how we're using this, these fundings, um, let's do it and, and move forward there. So yeah, we're, we're looking at that as well, and you're, you're, you're right on. The problem is, that's three years down the road for them to get something built and in place. If they get a piece of property today, then them getting funding to actually do the construction and the whole process and design, I mean, we're looking at two to three years, what are we going to do in the meantime? How are we going to address those people that need to be housed and ready to go in when that's finished? So it, it's, it's a spectrum. Uh, we're trying to solve all the faucets, the facets of it as we, as we look and trying to piece those together. We can't just do a shelter. If we just do a shelter, we're not doing anything other than putting people inside something and not doing anything to improve it. We've got to move those steps and, and get people moving into that direction to get them out and into the permanent housing. If you'll look in the, in the ordinances, especially the nine, chapter nine one, that's not the right numbers, but that's what we put on it for now, it's temporary. Transitional housing is meant to be temporary, whether it's the emergency, whether it's the, the more advanced traditional, it's, it's temporary. The ultimate purpose is getting them into your more permanent regular housing. For, like, I use air quotes around regular, I mean, what's regular or normal, but we, we've got to get them out of those situations.
Just to be clear, based on affordable housing, that's eleven hundred and ninety-three a month rent. So when we're talking that, when that's brought up, they're really meaning low income. Because
Thank you.
The affordable income is thirty percent of the median income.
And, you know, one of the other pieces, and we use, I've used the term a couple of times, is the permanent supportive housing as well. That's your affordable housing, but then it also has some of those wraparound services available as part of that housing so that some of those crises don't happen again, so that they're, they're learning to finance, to budget, they're learning to do the things they need to do to prepare or address health issues or things like that as well. Corey Commons is one of those in the community, the River Views here is one as well. I mean, we've got some of those, but they're full, you can't get in. Yeah.
Councillor Salisbury?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Myers, so, um, the transitional housing, when you say it is temporary, um, what exactly do you mean by that?
It's not intended to be permanent. It's, it's temporary. We don't have a time set on that, and there can be times. I mean, you can set times on, on some of those, and that's what this ordinance does, is it lets those agents that want to come in and run it can set a time limit.
Okay. Because that, that was my concern, because when I looked at some of the transitional housing around the country, a lot of the average times there were anywhere from five to ten years, and that does not sound very transitional to me. And, um, and then my other question is the one that I brought up before. Um, is there a way to come up with a game plan here and put it on the ballot so we can have a community buy-in? Some sort of community buy-in?
You can put anything on the ballot that you want.
I, I just, I just really question if something so large that will impact a community so much, ongoing, ongoing expenses should not maybe be on a ballot.
And, and I guess I'll, I'll revert back to my, my civics education days in school. You seven members have been elected to make the tough decisions. Um, this is a democratic republic, and sometimes you have to make those tough decisions and you don't throw it back on a ballot. Um, you, you throw it on a ballot, you're spending all that extra money to do, and I can't remember what the, the costs are, you're also taking the time to do that. Um, it, and, and it means nothing. I mean, you can, you can go back to twenty years ago with the, um, LTD situation and the LTD bus ballots that were on the ballot. Um, it was an advisory vote. It doesn't, it's not binding. Um, the council can, can do what they want after the vote is over, um, and you have those decisions that you have to make. Um, you're, you're, you're elected to make those tough decisions and go through the details that, that typically voters won't go through. I mean, you spent more time on this discussion in the last two meetings or the meeting prior, whenever, a couple of weeks ago, months ago, and this one than voters would spend on deciding and looking at the ballot measure.
Also, if you can have a public process associated, I mean, the less expensive and more direct feedback is inviting public comments in advance of you needing to make the decision, rather than, um, not punting, but that's, you know, rather than, uh, referring out. And, and ultimately, if the voters aren't happy with it, you know, they will also let their vote known.
They still get to vote, yeah. But yeah, this is not the, we're not going to make a decision based on this at this meeting. We're not going to make a decision at the next meeting. We might talk about one of the ordinances or something at the next meeting, but this is going to be a discussion that you're going to be involved in, in a much more detailed and time-consuming process with the public. I mean, you put it on the ballot and all of a sudden, a lot of that stops and you no longer are discussing it as a board because staff can't participate in that anymore, and it's, it's up to you guys to go out and talk on an individual basis. It's really nice to be able to have the forums and for you to have the, the public comment times and go through that process as we move forward. That's where, um, I think you'd be fulfilling your responsibilities better than just putting it on a ballot.
I, I would love to see us do a, a town hall and have a nice discussion with the whole city council and the mayor on this subject and really get it out to the public to come, because I would love to hear their feedback and know, and not just the people that come to our meetings and are here tonight. And by the way, thank you everyone for coming.
And I think Richard makes a great point, because a future council can turn around to do something completely different. Um, you know, and it is, it, boy, it's a tough one. Um, and, and like Richard says, we're not a direct democracy. Um, we are here, I mean, I think about some of the really complicated, you know, like the water plant or wastewater plants where you have all this technical information, and the average citizen expects us to do our homework and make decisions based on that. So I'm inclined to lean that direction. I love the idea of a town hall, I think that would be wonderful. Um, you know, I, I do think that it'll be passionate and we'll need some, some definite strong leadership from our mayor. But, uh, I, you know, and I'm, I'm fully confident there, of course, but, um, no, I think, uh, I think it's good, because this is, you know, it's a very tough subject because we've got to balance the needs of, um, the homeowners with the folks who are unhoused, with the folks that want to help, you know, um, uh, the unhoused, we've got, you know, the low-income folks who also need affordable housing. I mean, this is, this is a really complicated subject, and I would prefer we take our time and do this and make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we're hoping for. And I, I think that we're totally justified asking the questions, um, about, does this make sense, you know, both fiscally and, uh, for the well-being, because it's not just a money decision, and it's not just a heartstrings decision, I mean, it's, it's both. I mean, it's, it's both. You know, how can we improve the lives of, of all of our citizens, you know, while saving money? And I, as you all know, I'm very fiscally conservative. I don't want to be wasting money. I do want some partners in this process. Um, and I think they're out there. I mean, it's already happening in the metro area and I think it's certainly, um, you know, maybe we're able to replicate, replicate, easy for me to say, um, that here. So, so that's what I would hope. And so that, I, I totally support doing a town hall as well. Um, I think that's a wonderful idea.
So I was thinking about that. I would rather do the town hall as a special town hall night, like prior to a council meeting or anything like that. I'd rather have a, a three-hour night that we invite anybody in to talk for or against. But you're, you're getting the feedback and Counselor Irvin, did you want to add something? I know you had your hand up.
Oh, I'm debating on it. I'm mulling over the, the word entitlement and I realized that there's, that's actually a pretty charged word. Like, the thought I was thinking of, I like to take things out to the extreme when thinking about them, just to test them at the edge cases and kind of comes down to, you know, the thought, oh, you're free housing. I, oh, that was one of the assumptions. All of what we're talking about is zero cost to the, to the, those, okay. So everything, there's a burden to everything. And so that's the concept of, well, I, I, I can just take something from somebody else without any expectation of giving anything in return. So it's like, man, maybe, maybe I'll just quit paying my bills, uh, and lose everything and then just live for free. Because everybody deserves housing and I would deserve it and I should be given it. That, that, I can't even, I mean, I might find myself in a position where the house burns or whatever and maybe I didn't pay my insurance bills or something could happen to lead me to that, or I could become disabled, hit by a bus. There's a lot of people like to play that scenario through. But but it's a mind, the, the thing I'm struggling against is a mindset that, uh, that could either be, um, given space to grow and live and thrive or can be, uh, addressed and, and, and kind of mentored into a self-sufficient or a do give back to others, have, work hard so that you can have access to be generous with, um, kind of mindset. And I, I guess the other thought I had when Counselor Roberts was talking, uh, I had, with Mr. Roberts, you were, you were saying about the type of program that you were in versus the proceedings of the Boise case that I was watching. And when they were talking about what's reasonable accommodation, I couldn't help but think, I don't know that that program could fly and be considered reasonable, uh, as far as a place to be directed to under our current situation. So like, there's the, I feel like there's this hope, and I share that with you, that we could have like a mentorship type of, uh, program in existence that gives, that, that gives dignity, speaks to dignity, uh, that increases, um, capability, that mentors, that, that does all of the things that are needed to believe that you can actually achieve something and go and do it. I'm just concerned that the law is so restrictive and the, and the judgments rendered in the courts is so anti-that, uh, that we're just in a hopeless battle anyway. And I guess that's what I'm, I'm struggling against, I'm struggling with, is that we're in a hopeless situation, uh, that you, we can't do anything, we can't get on the right path, we can't course correct, um, that we're being strangled legislatively, uh, from real solutions and that everything that could, could have effect is being called unreasonable. And, and so I guess I, I just want to acknowledge that I have an underlying frustration with what I'm perceiving to be the landscape of this conversation we're having. I don't, I feel like our hands are tied, uh, largely and I, and I, so so I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate the conversations around it and that we have this time and that was given thumbs up on a town hall with plenty of time to hear public comment as well.
Since we got like five minutes left, do we want to try to schedule a town hall before we do another work session on this? Or would we want to do another work session, then do a town hall?
That's, they're, they're great questions. That's for, for you to
What, what would the council prefer?
Let me, let me throw in the one thing we were talking about before the meeting started, the announcement that possibly by March thirty-first, these things will be gone. We don't want to do any, if we're going to do a town hall, it would be really neat to not have the masking requirements and be able to do something in the armory or figure. So
Yeah, I was thinking here, but yeah, the armory would be a lot better.
So, so maybe, maybe we hold off a little bit and try to see what happens there, but in the meantime, yeah, we could do another town, another
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Flack? I would really love us to explore the, the ongoing operational funding. You know, I would really, I, cause that changes the whole conversation. You know, um, if we have partners in this financially, it changes the whole outcome. And I would want to pin down some of these questions before we do the town hall so that everybody can have a discussion based on, you know, more information than less. So I, I would really encourage us to, you know, really explore what exactly we want to do, who are the, the partners in the funding, you know, what is, you know, maybe have Carry It Forward give a presentation, um, you know, to us about, you know, their processes and how they work towards, um, you know, getting folks on their own two feet. Cause I think we're still, I think, guessing at a lot of the things, the pieces here. I would love to have that information and then share all that with the public in a town hall.
Yeah, and I, I think one of the, the issues associated with that, and that's where we've been struggling too, is, I mean, Lane County staff has completely changed. I mean, they have a whole new person that's completely new in the homeless and health, in the health and services stuff. So we've been trying to work with her and figure out, and she's still trying to figure out what's going on as well. So I think that'll give us some time to do some, some groundwork there. And, um, Chris was on, but he's off now. They are interested in doing a presentation and I think they'd love to come and talk to the council. So those are things that we can work out.
I'm worried about spending, uh, rescue money on this, because I know Eugene's getting seventeen million, they're throwing thirteen million at homeless. So, you know, that's, what are you going to do next year?
Yeah, a, a lot of it's capital. I mean, a lot of it is a one-time expense, but the, the piece that's an ongoing piece, that's the part that is really, um, something we have to think about.
You gotta, you gotta do it smart.
Oh, yeah. So let me, let me work with the county and see if we can get some more information as they're learning what's going on as well, with their new staff, and see if we can get some stuff put together before we think about it another day.
So I got Counselor Stenit had his hand up early, Counselor Savage, make it quick, we're like two minutes.
Okay, um, I had two things. I, I would agree with Counselor Irvin that entitlement is a, is a very charged word. Um, I would hope that we are not so much fostering the mindset of, I'm entitled to housing as when I'm at my lowest, I can count on my community, um, for at least the basics. Um, I think people who feel, uh, could feel at least secure in that could, uh, envision ways to give back once they are able. That's kind of the way that I hope we could approach this. The other thing is, could we have been doing town halls this whole time? I mean, it's been talked about for years, let's get people together and talk about these big issues. I love it, so.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much. I would like to see, um, ideas from folks who experience homelessness on what opportunities they feel would be the most beneficial to them. So if you're saying that Carry It Forward can conduct these surveys before our town hall and, and maybe when they present, I would like to see some actual data that says, we talked to forty folks that are unhoused and these are the things that they would recommend would help them the best. You know, we can come up with all these ideas, but that may not actually be beneficial and received. So I would like to see, and that would be some buy-in from folks who would utilize potential
We already have a list of homeless that are interested in talking to you. So they're already lined up waiting for a future meeting in the public process.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, I got eight o'clock and so I just want to commend the council for, you know, we got a lot of different feelings on this and you guys were very professional and got through it. So thanks for being such a good council and, because I know it's hard when you're, especially when your emotions start playing a factor in there, but you guys did a good job. So look forward to the next one we have. With that, we're adjourned.